County Tennessee is now in session. Your Honorable Chairman, Esther Presiding. God bless you, United States, the great state of Tennessee in this honorable meeting. At this time, Commissioner Hooks will leave some prayer. Afterwards, please remain standing for the pledge to our nation's flag.
Let us bow. Father, it's again that we come to you, Lord. Thank you, Father, for what you've done for us. Lord, in the strength that you've allowed us to gain back, Lord. Father, we're just, Father God, thankful to be here this evening. God, and we ask that you bless each and everyone that's here, Father, and the reason that they're here. Father God, we pray, Lord, that you come forward, Father God, and express their needs in that to this body. Lord, we want to lift up a couple of families to you this evening. Lord, we want to lift a family, our long family, up to you, Lord. Come to those who are us, Lord, and the Patterson family. Father God, those that Father has lost loved ones in their home, God, those in Morgan County. We lift them up, Lord, and help them to rebuild. And Father, get your families back together, Lord. Keep us humble, Lord. Thank you for your son, Jesus, that he died for our sins, that we might have life and have it more abundantly. And these things will live in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated and please silence your cell phones.
All right, roll call is complete. I'd like to have a motion to amend the agenda and just move some stuff around. Do you hear a motion?
I have a motion.
Say it.
Say it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Black sign opposed. All right. At this time, Coach Wade's got a proclamation. The majority of our audience of County Executive, if you would, go ahead and proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Would the Kingston Commissioners like to join me on stage for a reading of proclamation? And would the members of the Kingston High School Fishing Team like to join me up here on the platform as well? Coaches included. Thank you all so much and thank you all for being here. It is our privilege to honor you all for what you have done for the Kingston community, for your school for the last few years. So we want to take a minute and do a proclamation to honor all that you have done and doing. So if you'll just bear with me for just a few seconds. Whereas the Kingston High School Fishing Team designated by T double S double A consistently demonstrates dedication, sportsmanship, and a love for the sport of fishing in Rome County High School. And whereas these young anglers develop valuable skills such as teamwork, patience, and environmental awareness while fostering a positive environment to learn about aquatic ecosystems and the importance of conservation. And whereas since 2014, the Kingston High School Fishing Team has established a tradition of excellence, finishing in the top 10 teams in the state for three consecutive years totaling over $50,000 in prize money and cultivating a winning culture. And whereas the Kingston High School Fishing Team has achieved remarkable success, including a second place finish in 2022-23 State Tournament by Will Bacon and Hayes Barnett out of 476 teams, a third place finish in 2024 State Tournament by Hayden Barnett and Camden Cranfield out of 313 teams, qualification for multiple national tournaments and the Tennessee State Fishing Tournament, and securing multiple college scholarship opportunities for team members. Now therefore, I, Wade Cresswell, Rome County Executive, along with the Rome County Commission, to hereby proclaim February 10th, 2025, as Kingston High School Fishing Team Day in Rome County, Tennessee, in honor of their outstanding achievements, efforts, and success. Please join me.
Very proud of these young men.
Super proud.
I don't know that I am because every time I pull on a hoe, here they come and run me off.
Your coach, right?
Yes, sir.
Coach, will allow the coach say something?
Yeah, kid.
He knows more about it than we do.
These guys put in work day in, day out. It's beyond me, especially for the older guys, our seniors. We got Hayden Barnett. We got, God, I'm bad with names. James Lane, Jackson Daughtry. There are three seniors this year. Camden Cranfield's a junior. These kids, I mean, I'm telling you, even the young guys, they're out there every day. They're putting it in. If they're not working or at school, they're on the water.
Coach, how long has it been since we've had a scholarship on the fishing team? To go back? I was trying to look it up. Do y'all know?
Probably Logan.
Two days.
Yeah. Hayden signs Thursday at the high school at 3:00. Everybody's welcome at the gym. But the last scholarship, probably Logan East, Victor Alfred, right, Haley? When would that have been? 21? That's awesome. So.
Will probably could have got one, but he went for golf.
Will could have got one. He could have. There's more scholarship money in golf than there are fishing. So that's a no-brainer. No-brainer there.
Guys, just pack in here. Let's get a quick picture here.
Mr. Cresswell?
Come on up this way, guys.
One thing that we don't take for granted on these, when these guys are out fishing on these other lakes, Rome County, Tennessee, on the side of their boat, that's bringing tourism dollars in to Rome County that we're not even aware of. So that's a big plus. Thank you very much for that. And I think we've got somebody signed, Carson Newman?
Yep.
Thursday. You'll leave.
That one's up there.
Especially Stacy Wilson, who helped encourage us to make this day happen. This is very deserving and appreciate the encouragement. So let's pack in here and get us a picture. Somebody here.
Make sure you get your face.
I was kind of co-coach at the time. I was in the process of taking over the head coach. Uh-oh, there you go.
All right, we're good. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. You're welcome. Yeah, hey. We need all the sponsorship money y'all want to get. And one other thing, if you catch a day in your car, don't throw it back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, guys, for amending that agenda. Also, later on, before we get to new business, I'll add to amend the agenda again so to bring up an old resolution. So at this time, I have a motion. All right, motion from Junior Second. Bracket. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, black sign. Thank you. Amber, let me know. I'm throwing some stuff at you. Let's get in there. All right, motion approved and amended to the January 13th, 2025 meeting. Motion by Wilson, second by Gann. Commissioner Wilson.
Nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Gann.
The other votes are.
Any discussion, any debate. Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. All right, 15. All right, motion to accept the committee reports and correspondence. Motion by Mr. Berry, second by Commissioner Dove. Commissioner Berry.
Yes, sir. Just real quick, in your magazine, Tennessee Counties, Mr. Cresswell, as the chairman, I guess the opioid committee, we got a really nice write-up that Rome County normally doesn't get in these magazines. So thanks to you for getting the opioid committee in a status that's state-renowned and thank you for that.
We have certain members, I think a few, I know of the opioid committee. I see Lisa back there. Anybody else opioid counsel here? So we have a couple here. Kind of two commissioners, Commissioner Layman, Commissioner Cunningham.
So I think I heard today we may be getting some more money from opioid side. That one. And then on report number 19, the financial report. I think we're, even though we're 50% of the year thus far, we haven't gotten all 50% of the money then, right? We're a month behind. So if you look at these and see some, like for instance, the business tax, you know, we're only 8.67% of our budget of $900,000. But if you look and check, most of that comes in May and June. So we're okay there. Cable TV franchise, we're 21% of our budget, but that comes in quarterly. Some of that will come in. And I guess some of the others are the same way in the fee offices. And I guess one that, our sales tax is up 12%. Our risk management, we prepay this stuff there, right? So that's what throws that off. Ambulance, that's the one that probably we just got really, and the committee's aware of it. We're doing the proper thing. Calls are down, so our volume is down, which treats the whole thing. So just be looking at that. That's there. And Medicaid checks are due part and part of them if we're late of us, Medicaid. That causes that. So just want to make sure that we're aware of those. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Commissioner Dove.
Nothing further.
All right, any discussion, any debate. Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. All right, motion carries 15. This time, notaries list to be presented. I have a motion and a second. All right, motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Wilson. Commissioner Henderson.
Just appreciate your willingness to serve.
Commissioner Wilson.
Nothing further.
All right, any discussion, any debate. Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. All right, motion carries 15. Guys, I apologize that I've messed up a little bit here changing the agenda. We do have a zoning resolution. So at this time, I'd like to open up for public hearing to discuss anything on the 0225010 zoning resolution. Zoom back from the audience, would you like to speak to this zoning?
You didn't make these kind of mistakes when you didn't have a beard.
Don't be, it's the hair on my head.
So any discussion on 0125 zoning? All right, hearing none, seeing none, we'll move forward with the hearing of delegations at this time. Anyone want to address the county commission at this time? Please step forward.
I'm here complaining. My name is Carolyn Buschrody. I'm a native of Kingston, Tennessee. Proud to believe that. I'm here to announce that the Carolyn Buschrody Foundation has been established. We are going to be able to, this year, give one scholarship to one graduating senior from every high school in Rome County. We're also going to be able to give to one organization Helping Hand Award. And I'm really excited about this. I've wanted to do it for a long time and I just wasn't ready. But God said, I'm ready now. So I'm really excited about it. It's something that I've always wanted to do. My heart is with the youth of Rome County. I appreciate them. It's no school more important to me than any other school. I'm the same as you. I've been everywhere, talked to all the students and everything, Black History Month, whatever. But I want to be able to do this. I want to give back to my community because I'm proud of where I come from. And my mama always told me, don't ever forget where you came from. And I won't forget because you all have been so good to me. You supported me in any and every endeavor that I've ever tried. And I want to thank you tonight for that. I appreciate you so much. And these are not just words because I don't tell everybody this. This comes from my heart. And I appreciate each and every one of you. A lot of you know me and some of you don't. I don't know all of you, but I know that you're my friend. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. In front of you, you've got a little advertisement. This is advertisement for donations to the foundation. We're going to be doing some exciting things. We can't announce anything other than the scholarships right now. But coming soon, you're going to see big things from the Carolyn Buschrody Foundation. Thank you.
Hey, Carolyn, how many Hall of Fames are you a member of?
Okay, brother. I am a member of eight Hall of Fame. I'm a member of a museum, the Hutchinson Flying Queens in Texas. I have a ring from Naismith, where Michael Jordan and all those guys are. In 2019, I was selected to be in the Women's Basketball Hall of Fame and so on and so on. I've lived my life. I want to give something back to our kids. That's all I'm about.
All right, next speaker.
Good evening, Tennessee, everybody. I'm Justin Sturrock, President and CEO of the Rome Alliance. And I brought a magazine tonight too. I know Commissioner Berry mentioned the magazine, but when I'm out about, Rome County is getting talked about right now. People just want to know what's going on in Rome County. And I was at the P E D C Fall Conference in Jackson back in the fall. And after the conference, Site Selection Magazine reached out to me and said, hey, we want to do a couple of articles in our January edition. It's a pretty big deal. Wade knows that this magazine goes out to consultants and site selectors all across the United States and the world. And it's good that Rome County is being put out in front. So I brought six copies of the magazine tonight so y'all can pass it around and share. They're a tab. But there's a lot of talks in there about Rome County, Oak Rigs Reservation, D O B, T V A. They reached out and got interviews with Kairos Power and Tris O X. They got some quotes from John Ruth with Arono. And our own, Dawn Carlock at the Rome Alliance, she put together a really nice ad that showcased twice in the magazine that calls out Rome County, calls out with a QR code that directs someone to our website that they can look at available sites. And then it lets the world know that we're a nuclear-friendly community. So check the magazine out, something that we're very proud of. The last thing I'll mention tonight is that I gave everybody a copy of the President's Report. I'm going to start bringing this to you guys. It's a great snapshot of everything that's going on at Rome Alliance, from I D B to tourism to chamber to education of workforce development. It's something that I give the Alliance, Chamber, and Industrial Development Boards. And that way you can see on three or four pieces of paper, everything that's going on in our organization. Couple of things I want to highlight really quick. If you look under E C D and Education Workforce Development. I'm looking at the second bullet point now. The Rome Alliance was one of three title communities with the entire T V A seven-state service region to be selected to participate in a new workforce initiative that's called Economic Development Talent Accelerator. They reached out to us, Rome County. Only three in seven states, they reached out to us. The initial kickoff meeting for this program will be on March the 5th. And they've actually asked that we bring T Cat Harriman, Rome State Community College, and Rome County Schools to be a part of this initiative. So we're very excited about that. And we'll flip over and mention a couple of things with tourism. If you look at occupancy tax numbers at the bottom, I'm trying to put a finger on this, but year over year through January, our occupancy tax numbers are up almost 22%, which is a, that's pretty big. I'm sure a lot of that has to do with a lot of the fishing tournaments that Stacy does. And there's been some traction on short-term rentals. Rome Tourism's new campaign, Win in Rome, is officially out. And our team now has all new sets of new campaign marketing materials that includes visitor guides, rack cards, pad maps, and new photos and videos. There's a reveal party that is scheduled for March the 6th at Gates Hall and Harriman. Everyone's invited and there's more details to come. So Stacy, thank you for putting that together. That's exciting to share. The last thing I'll mention is with Chamber. In 2024, the Rome Chamber had 38 ribbon cuttings. And we are dedicated to surpass that number in 2025. And one of my favorite events that the Chamber does every year, the Legislative Breakfast, was held on January the 20th at the Rome Alliance. It was a frigid, cold morning, if y'all remember. It was about 12, 10 degrees. But we had a wonderful turnout. We probably had 40 or 50 attendees. I think here are updates from Senator Ken Baker and Representative Monty Fritz on their thoughts and perspective on this year's legislative study. So I'll try to bring this report to you guys every month. If not, I'll try to include it in the packet. It's a great snapshot of everything that our team does each and every day. And that concludes my report and I'll answer any questions that shall not.
Mr. Chairman, I think you forgot to tell us one thing. During the conference in Jackson, he was awarded Economic Community Development Professional of the Year award.
We're Lee and Betty Benson and we're supposed to get your permission or approval to do our family graveyard? Is this what we're supposed to be here doing?
Oh, thank you. Go in front of the zoning.
Land official.
Land for zoning.
No, I think it's switching from commercial to residential.
Oh. Is that our, you're on the agenda?
Okay.
Oh, we're not supposed to be up here right now.
Oh, okay.
Let me pause you just a second. When I earlier said that we'll work with you, I'll give you time here in just a minute when we come to it. So I'll bring you back up then.
All right, thank you.
All right, anyone else want to address the county commission? All right, hearing none, seeing none, we'll close that portion of the meeting and then we'll go to the county attorney's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got three matters. First of all, on the mini pumper truck, last week, the county executive signed the settlement agreement with H M E that you all approved back in December. We are waiting on H M E's signature and hopefully they'll come soon. Secondly, we have codes violation court tomorrow and we've got 11 or 12 cases set. And thirdly, the two lawsuits that you authorized me to file last month have been filed. So if the resolution that you're bringing back up is 12504 concerning the lawsuit regarding Broken Arrow Point, it's too late to rescind that resolution because it was a resolution to file suit and it's been filed. So what you would need to do is somebody would have to make a motion to dismiss the suit. That would be the next thing that you could bring up. And, Mr. Chairman, that is my report. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the county executive's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If y'all refer to your rundown at the staff provided for you, a couple of notes I want to make here. First of all, there's new sections. You have new sections on grants. There's a grants report. There's also a records report that we'll provide to you on a regular basis. Looking at the first point there, first bullet point, all of you should have a copy of the 2024 Annual Financial Report. There were two findings in this report. The finding that applied to, fell under our purview. I provided some explanation there. We talked about this back in December as well, that we didn't necessarily agree with this, but we corrected it in the corrective report, what we did for, as a corrective measures, on page 266 in the annual financial report. Second thing I want to point out to you is a second point, is all of you now have a copy of this. I've been working hard to try to get this. This is what you all approved back in the fall as our long-range strategic plan. This also provides the basis for our next work together on Long Range Planning Committee, which we have a meeting, I believe, on Thursday, correct? I think it's on Thursday.
We do.
On Thursday, right. So again, the very, an introduction in the land use planning for that, but it is building off of this strategic plan. Third point I want to make is this is a reappraisal year. And I've asked our property assessor, Molly Harder, to come and begin the process of education on what the reappraisal means. This is important and this is a very important point for everybody in this room because when this reappraisal happens and the reports start coming out, we're all the ones who will be asked about this. So it's very important that we understand the process and I've asked Molly to come start that tonight.
Good evening. Thank you for this time. The reappraisal 2025 is almost come to a close. So we are currently on a five-year reappraisal cycle. So we have over 37,000 parcels in Rome County. We have close to 1,900 personal property accounts in Rome County. With the reevaluation slash reappraisal, we have to review every single parcel in four years to get that done for the reappraisal. The last year is for reevaluation. So what that means is our last reappraisal was 2020. So our market was set for 2018, 2019, '04, 2020. So this year, we have to reflect 2024. As you all know, what has happened since 2019 and what the market has done. So I'm going to be getting out, educating. Wade and myself are going to be educating as many people as we can. It's a big undertaking. I have a remarkable staff that has worked so hard. And we did our in-house reappraisal. We have to have a little bit of assistance because of base rates, things like that. That is what they control. We don't have control over that. They do take it from our market. So they base their base rates off of our current sales. So we review between 2,000 and 4,000 deeds and take those as our market. So it's going to be an accepted sale per the state codes of what we can accept, what we have to reject. So it's a willing buyer, willing seller. So those are the, that is our market. And it has been unbelievable. We couldn't even keep up with all the sales that have happened last year, year before. So we try to keep it as current as possible, try to use 2024. Some areas we might have to dip back in 2023, just depends. So we have to establish land based off the sales, all the residential housing based off the sales, our commercial, industrial properties based off the sales. So obviously residential has just skyrocketed. And you know, we've got lots and lots of people that have moved here from elsewhere that has set that market and you know, benefited a lot of people, but not the rest of us that live here and have been born and raised here. But I have a job to do and that job is bringing everything to current market value. So we have to take those statistics, all the reports that we run. We have to work with the state to get to 100% or 1. And so that is a big undertaking. So Barry Koper, myself, his staff upstairs, we have to come to one in I don't even know how many sections of our impact system to get to the correct amount and the right process to do this reevaluation. We call this in the assessment world, reevaluation year because every year is reappraisal year because we're constantly on property, we're constantly working deeds, sales. We have so many programs that we do that we're responsible for. But with our elderly, with the tax freeze program, it affects them because when we do a ratio, unfortunately, that affects how much they have to pay that the state won't pay. So that's why we want the most current market value. And so y'all see that I have a new plan that put in your packet for a more frequent reappraisal and I'll talk about that more at a later time. But I just, Wade wanted me to just get up here, kind of just give you all an idea. There's so much more to it that we have worked very, very hard. My staff has worked so hard and I'm very proud of them. And it's taken so long through so many trials and so we are almost done. We have our final meeting in March. The assessment change notices will go out in April. We have two weeks of inform here. We have two weeks of impound hearings at the end of April. And then based off of what we find throughout that, depending on if you're happy, not happy, then if we can't work something out with that taxpayer, they have the opportunity to go before the County Board of Legalization and appeal that property. So we will be seeing that this year. We've got a lot of things ahead of us that we've got to, you know, tackle, get through. The biggest thing is education, and we want to educate as many people as possible. But during the year of reappraisal is a revenue neutral year. So whatever percentage that our, our values go up, the tax rate drops an average, okay? So whatever we go up in percentage, the tax rate, the certified tax rate comes down. So whatever that is. So if the taxpayer is above that average, they'll pay a little bit more taxes. If they're below that average, they'll pay less taxes. And if they get right in the middle, they won't see a difference because it's a revenue neutral year. Now, the only new money we get in the year of reappraisal is new construction. So we work very hard to try to get as many houses, commercial, whatever is new out there, and we work very closely with Glenn Coper's office, the Coes Department. They do a great job, and we work their building permits, and they just keep flowing in, keep flowing in. And so I send my staff out. We have two or three times a year that we just go hit it, sometimes more, just depending on the area and how much we have to get accomplished. So that's our new revenue, new money. But other than that, we can't bring any more money in for taxes because it is a revenue neutral year. Thank you for your time.
One thing I want to add on this too is, is that's such a key point. When those notices go out in April, the people who are paying more taxes are going to be calling you and me and Molly and anybody else that works for county government thinking, why are you raising my taxes? So all of us have until April to get up to speed on what that process is so that people will understand their taxes didn't get raised. You're paying more, but it's because your property value fluctuated according to the average. So just make sure you're comfortable when those notices come out so that you can help answer those questions too. Otherwise, they're going to think you've raised their taxes.
They won't know their taxes in April. They're just going to see their value, okay? So the tax rate will be set according to a formula. We'll have that in July. The note, then the actual tax bills will come out in October. So they're going to look at their appraisal and think, oh, my gosh, what is going on here? And they're going to be screaming, hollering, but you got to remind them the tax rate will come down the average of what Rome County has seen go up in the market value. Revenue neutral. Just remember, revenue neutral, and the percent that is the average that goes up is the average that the tax rate comes down, okay? And I'd be happy to speak to any of y'all if y'all want to stop by my office. Just set a time with me, call, we'll set it up. Any other questions you have, I'd be happy, any of my staff, myself. So just let me know. We're always open. Thank you all.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Yes, sir. Chair recognizes Commissioner Hook.
Mr. Chairman, this may be a question for Wade or Jennifer, but what are we anticipating? What kind of impact it's going to have on?
Well, Molly, I had that conversation today. At this point, it's somewhat speculation. Just know that property values have increased significantly. Even where we thought we were going to be last year, it's different than that now. So that's safe to say, but we had, any number we throw out there now, I'm hesitant to do that. But we need to be ready to be able to answer people's questions.
For sure. Okay. Mr. Chairman, I got a question. So these say you're going to have to inform the public. I mean, is it going to be like a community thing, Molly? Or is it, because I mean, if it is, I won't, I mean, once it goes out, I want, I want to learn more about this because this is, this is outside, way outside of me.
I'm not having public hearings, meetings, anything like that. Anywhere I'm invited to come, I'll be happy to come and educate, but I'm not going to, you know, have a big town meeting or anything like that. I just want you all to be aware because you're going to be getting a lot of the phone calls because you represent your, your districts. So I just want, if you're not familiar with it and you're not okay with it, come to me. Let me, let me explain it to you because it's complicated, but then the bottom line is it's not, okay? So we know in 2019 versus 2024 what the market has done. If anybody has watched real estate or you, you know, sold a house or bought a house, anything like that, you sell high, okay? You buy high. So that's, that's the way it is. It is, it's absolutely a seller's market. And so you've got to, it's not a buyer's market. It's a seller's market. So anytime, just call myself, Barry Coper, we will be happy to sit down with you all, try to educate you all the best that we can. These notices are going to come out. Everybody that comes up to the window now, we've been educating for the last year or two, everybody that comes up, because it is so volatile. And this is statewide. This is not, not this year, you know, that so many counties are on different cycles. But this is, this has been widespread and it has, it has, you know, caused some ruckus, but more and more people are seeing that's because of the market. The market has done this, and I have a job to do, and per TCA law, we have a job to do, and we have to bring the market up because everybody, you got to distribute that wealth, you know, that you have to pay equally, whether it's residential, commercial, industrial. We, we do our very best to be as fair as possible, but when I've got sales staring at me, we have to price the land accordingly. We have to price the houses accordingly. We have to price the commercial property accordingly. And we work, we work very closely with Justin at the IDB, you know, what are they selling their industrial development lots for? So we do that every five years. We try to set that, he's, he kind of sets that market and we try to follow it. So we want to all stay in line. We want to be consistent. We blend with Anderson County. We blend with all these other counties, and so we try to do our very best when we're pricing land to blend as well as we can unless they've not seen reappraisal. And then, you know, it's our turn that we have to set, you know, do the market in our area, and then they'll blend in with us, and it's their turn to do reappraisal.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Commissioner Hook.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Don't go nowhere, Molly.
Oh, sorry. I thought you were done with me.
I remember a few years ago, that the market bottom dropped out of it.
It was more than a few years ago.
Well, I didn't want to say how old. But you couldn't, you couldn't sell that house. No one wanted to buy, they didn't want to pay you what the current market value was. They wanted a low market value. The house that I live in now, it's just little shacks upriver. It has more than double in value, and I would tell it today if somebody wanted to buy it.
But you got to have some more to go.
We're going to live. But that's another thing. How solid is this market? I mean, is there any way to project that five years from now, this market's going to be the same? I mean, we're going to eventually, we're going to quit getting people in California. We're going to quit getting people in New York. They're going to realize that, they're going to go back that way.
I don't know if they ever want to go back to that. To answer your question about the market, no one, you know, can predict the future. I will say this, in 2010 is when it hit Rome County, it hit California in '07, '08, and it trickled its way here in '10, and we were down, you know, for many, many years. And then kind of 2019, 2020, 2020, well, actually 2020, 2021, we started seeing after COVID or during COVID, a big upswing, and it has just took off. So we are rotting ourselves. I think the prices have rotted theirselves, so I'm hoping they'll level off. I don't know that they'll ever go backwards, not for a while. But they were, they were so low for so long, and I'm not saying I agree with people coming in here and, you know, buying things sight unseen for whatever price somebody puts on something. But when you've got more and more and more of that, it sets a market. It sets a market.
That's common.
And so we have to listen to that market. We see it black and white in these deeds every day, all day long, and we can't keep up. And so this reappraisal has really opened up our eyes that the last two or three years, the assessors that I've talked to and at our conferences, it's been unreal what the percentage is that they've gone up, and it just keeps going. So anyone else have any questions for me before I sit down again?
All right, thank you.
I'll wait.
You'll wait till I say it.
County Speaker.
That concludes my report. Glad to answer your questions.
Any questions with County Speaker? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. Our motion carries 15. Next on the agenda is the zoning resolution. This is 0125, no, 02250121, and this is action taken from the Planning Commission, approved this recommendation, a, Rome County Legislative Commission has been asked to consider the resoning of map 079, parcel 23.01. I have a motion by Ferguson and a second by Hook. Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes, sir. It takes to Planning Commission.
Our, Commissioner Hook.
That's the part.
All right, if, if the couple come up here, do you want to just say anything to the commission?
No, sir. We thought it was something there. It needs to just change an Irish commercial to residential, right?
Yes, sir.
No, sir. Thank you.
All right. Any discussion, any debate? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. Our motion carries 15. Thank you all. All right, this time we're into new business. Before we get to new business, discussion on old business at this time, on Resolution So I hear a motion.
Which one?
That's for the trees on the road.
Second.
All right, what was your motion? Motion, we need a motion to dismiss.
Yes, this, dismiss, yes.
Motion to dismiss by Commissioner Henderson. And I'm sorry, Amber, I should have included you in on this. All right, a second by Commissioner Gann.
Gann.
All right, so what this is doing is dismissing the lawsuit that we had the county attorney file. And then what we're going to do.
What number was that?
So I'm going to take a vote to dismiss this, then I'm going to take another vote to send this back, send this same resolution back to the Highway Department. So right now, you'll be voting on the dismissal of this, and then I'll have to take another, or can I combine the two or?
Um, probably not.
Okay.
Well, so we're going to dismiss, so you're, yeah, you would need two motions, one to dismiss the lawsuit, and then you have to bring up the original.
I just tried to be cheap and quick. I'm sorry.
Right, same.
Let me know when you're ready.
So, so you have a discussion?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Commissioner Burris. Any discussion on this old business resolution?
Yeah, I guess I'm just curious, curious as to why we want to, why we want to do away with the lawsuit.
Well, in order to return it back to the department, if the subcommittee for the Highway Department wants to discuss it in that and then bring it back. Originally, I, you know, and I tell you, talking, it should, I should have called it back in January when we brought it up that it should have come from the Highway Department Subcommittee with recommendation for the County Commission. And I don't disagree with that, but, but it did come to us and we voted on it. We did.
And, and we filed, and, and he's, the attorney's done what we asked him to do. Are we setting a precedent now for every time that something doesn't go to a committee that we're going to be able to redo it?
Well, no, we're going to set a precedent that stuff pertaining to the committee should have went there.
I'm just saying, we, it's happened in the past, at, probably sometime during almost every meeting, something goes through that, that hadn't been to a committee. I, I just caution that we're going to probably set a precedent for this.
No, it's no different than a property committee or anything else. If a truck's getting auctioned off or something like that, it shouldn't went through the property committee. That's, that's only, that's my understanding, Commissioner Burris.
Can I speak? I've had the opportunity to go look at the road, had not done that for the last meeting, and, and there are, there are trees that are, that are hanging over. The root system is, is visible. I mean, if you had a wind come through, those things are liable to go across and, and block that traffic, and that is the only road in and out of that, that area. So I, I mean, I think it's a, it's, it's situation that really needs to be addressed as quickly as possible.
Well, I would agree, I would agree with you as well. It does need to be addressed as quick as possible, but I'd also submit to you that there's 612 miles of roads in Rome County that also need to be addressed. Even driving to that same location, I've witnessed and noticed trees on my road that need to be addressed. So, and I've asked the county attorney to look, or the Highway Department to, I would ask them, where's their boundary? If it's 12 feet of paved road, plus two foot on each, ten foot plus two, does that boundary go vertical then? Do I own 25 feet in the air of that, or do I own 40 feet in the air of that? So is there a lawsuit even needed if I own that property? I know it originates on that property.
Yes, a lawsuit would be needed if the tree is growing on somebody else's property. You don't, you don't have the right to cut it just because it's hanging up.
Okay.
Because it's somebody else's tree.
I just thought it, it treated on mine on branch on my neighbor. I've got this tree all the time, so. It is a graveyard next to me, so that's not complaining. Because it's the bracket.
I just, like I said the first time, the word lawsuit is pretty strong when you're talking somebody on, you know, their property, and you can go on any road around here. I can go on James Ferry Road and count 50 trees, I promise you. But I don't think we've set the precedence. I think we're just, we were ill-informed and it didn't go through the proper channels, you know, like you said, but Mr. Ferguson or somebody could come here and give us an explanation or what, what has been the cause with the landowner? Why is it one spot, not all over the county? I mean, I, as far as setting a precedence, I think if we do this, we're opening Pandora's box. I mean, I don't see how we're not. And if it goes to court, I can't imagine it goes in a week or two, six months down the road. Everybody's talking about the trees falling. I can't take in five minutes, five days, five months, or five years, the tree's going to fall, and I don't know who could. It happens all the time. So putting a lawsuit on an individual, on a tree on his property, to me is just, I don't understand myself.
Okay, really, the only, the only way I can respond to that, I don't know what happened to bring it to me to ask to file a suit, but under the law, your liability as to conditions of the roadway attaches when you become aware that there's a defective condition or a dangerous condition with the roadway, when you put on notice. So I would assume that the Highway Department was put on notice somewhat, and that's why they brought it to me.
I would imagine we'll have to hire a lot of people because if we do this and go forth with it, there'd be a lot of calls. I mean, I can go around my road and ribbon them off or do whatever you want to, but I mean, there's trees hanging over the road, fixing to fall. I had people call me chewing me out on my road, and they were told, that's unprivate property, we can't touch it. Hanging over, dead, fixing to fall. And I've got a fellow sitting back here now that lives on the same road, he can attest that there's several trees. So I can't imagine we'd have three or 400 lawsuits over trees, you know what I mean? But, but anyway, we'll vote and see how it goes.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Gann.
Not to keep picking it, but you, but you made a statement. I need clarification. If someone is made aware of a hazard, say, say that tree, so Mr. Ferguson has been made aware of the hazards of that tree, and once he's been made aware of that, if that falls and causes damage or death or whatever to an individual or to a piece of property, does that make the county responsible?
That's, that's when the county's liability attaches for conditions on the roadway, is when the county is made aware of a dangerous condition. So if, if a tree falls on roadway, the county government, Highway Department, whoever had no notice that that tree was dangerous, there shouldn't be any liability. But once you become aware and put on notice of liability, of potential liability, that's when you're responsible if something happens. Now, I know the, in my discussions with the road superintendent, he had Rockwood Electric Utilities tree person. Electric Utilities tree person come out and look at it and identify trees that were subject to, to the risk of falling. And they identified, I think he told me, seems like twenty-two trees.
In that area.
In that, in, on that person's property that, that they were concerned with, so that's the information I have.
That's amazing.
So, to, to clarify, if I call Mr. Burris, and I say, "Mr. Burris, in the Dicky Valley Ridge, trees are hazard rated of falling." If he doesn't act on those, does, since I could make contact with him as an individual, not as a commissioner, and said, "These trees are a hazard, I've called it, I've documented it, the date I called it and what I told you." If those fall, that makes Rome County responsible?
That would place liability on Rome County if tree falls and somebody's injured. Or if, 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 if the view is blocked and somebody has an accident, or, or something like that.
Yeah. I understand the view, I understand the view, the view block to, to intersection. I didn't know, though, if I was to call and just say, "There's a, there's a tree gonna fall, y'all may wanna do something about it," and if they don't, you know, if falls, it makes the county responsible, I didn't know that.
That, that can expose the county to liability. If the county's put on notice of a dangerous condition associated with the road, and that condition causes somebody being injured.
When you say exposed, does that mean that, that they potentially are accountable, or they are accountable?
That, once the county's made notice, if it's injured because of the condition that the county is placed on notice of, then the county can be made liable.
I have got pictures of, of that road that shows the trees and shows the roof system. If anybody would like to see them, I would, I'm glad to see them.
I drove and took video pictures myself.
All right, any other discussion? Just, just, Commissioner... Chair recognizes Commissioner Hooks.
There's Commissioner. I can speak from some point of experience, being a detective director of nine-one-one. We were all the time getting calls for hazardous, stop signs missing, potholes in the road, and they have been in the past, and they, they were successful where the county, uh, was found liable, uh, caught deep potholes, stop signs missing, uh, once, once you put it out, even the officer driving down the road, he, he keys up his mic and say, "Nine-one-one, no five road park, this sign's missing, you put on notice."
Anything else, Commissioner Hooks?
That's it.
Okay. Commissioner Burris?
Yeah, I was just gonna, I, the, the attorney said, uh, the thing is, is when we put on notice, um, and, and I think the other word was reasonable. Uh, if, if I called him and tell him, "I got a tree that I will cut," and to try to put it on notice, that's not gonna work. If I call him and I show him the picture, or, or I say, "This tree is, is rotten and it's gonna fall, and I don't cut it," then, then the county's, the county's gonna be on notice. I think the other thing here is, we've got school bus going down through here every day. Don't, don't...
Yes, that's one of the, uh, and that, that's one of the first stops, so there's forty-five, fifty kids on the bus as it goes down that road each day.
So, so I think, I think if we, if we're on notice now, and we take ourselves off notice, then, then that probably, that probably even, even puts us in a different position, 'cause we were on notice and now we're coming off of it. So I think that the, 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 trees are the hardest thing from an insurance company's standpoint to try, to try to settle. And, and when, when it comes down to who wins and who loses, it's that notification of, 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 of a bad tree that you don't take care of, and it falls on your house, and then, then instead of your, your insurance paying for it, then your neighbors are gonna pay for it. It's, it's, it's really tough with trees, but it's, it's, it all comes back to who's, you know, reasonable doubt. So that's what we're trying to eliminate, I thought, in this whole thing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, any other discussion? Commissioner Henderson.
I just have one question, is the power lines going through it?
I did not see any power line across the road.
And not through the trees, need to cut it?
I didn't see any.
I didn't see any.
Okay, I just, if there was, that'd be the utility.
Yeah, I did not see any, uh...
If I'm not mistaken, they're on the way, kind of that field, utilities, you know, I do.
To that point, can I say one quick thing?
Certainly.
We've been notified by some property owners on River Road of a tree leaning on telecommunications lines. And because they're leaning on telecommunications lines, it's not the highway's responsibility, it's not the utility's responsibility, it's not the county's responsibility, it's, it's, uh, not T-Dot's responsibility, it is that line that's holding it up. So we have notified through T-Dot the owner of that line to address that, so that the liability is now not on us. If it falls, it is on the, uh, telecommunications company, this line's held up. So we've done what we can to make sure we're not responsible if it falls. That being said, the property owners aren't happy, they don't care who, who cuts it down, so we're still getting a lot of calls like that. Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? All right, this time we're gonna take a vote to dismiss this lawsuit, and then we'll take another vote later, so, Madam Clerk.
Barry.
So a, a yes vote would dismiss, and no vote would, uh, keep it a lawsuit.
Barry.
No.
Brackett.
Yes.
Cunningham.
No.
Dove.
No.
Ferguson.
No.
Gann.
Yes.
Goss.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Henderson.
Yes.
Hester.
Yes.
Hooks.
No.
Kirby.
Yes.
Harps.
Yes.
Wilson.
No.
War split. Can't be split, it's odd numbers. One short, I think. Eight to seven-four, I think. I want to count. It's eight to seven-four.
Chairman, we've got eight-six, which means we've missed one individual, so we can revote.
All right, let's, let's recall with you.
Okay. Barry.
No.
Brackett.
Yes.
Cunningham.
No.
Dove.
No.
Ferguson.
No.
Gann.
Yes.
Goss.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Henderson.
Yeah.
Hester.
Yes.
Hooks.
No.
Kirby.
No.
Lehman.
Yes.
Harps.
Yes.
Wilson.
No.
Eight-seven. That's correct, yeah.
For dismiss?
Yes. Eight yeses, seven nos.
All right, so the motion to dismiss passes, so at this time, we're gonna do a, a vote to resend this, uh, back to the highway department, in subcommittee. Do I have a motion?
Do we need to vote on that, Mr. Chairman?
It would automatically do that, wouldn't it?
That's why we're, that's why we rescind it, if that hadn't been there.
No, it, um, if you're gonna send the issue to your subcommittee, you need to make a motion to do that, because you basically have dismissed the lawsuit, so unless you bring something else up, it's not an issue anymore.
All right, so motion to resend back to the highway department.
That same resolution.
That same resolution, zero, one, forty-five, four.
Okay. No.
All right, Commissioner Hooks, second by Commissioner Henderson. Commissioner Hooks.
I think we, I think we have clarity, uh, on those. I pray something don't happen going down then, but I'll support sending it back, since I'm on the road committee.
This is the chairman, you said.
I think junior, please, chairman.
Commissioner Henderson, you had the second.
Um, I've got nothing further.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, it's going back to the...
Highway department.
Going to the road committee.
Road committee for the highway department, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Amber, I can do the voice, though, but I think we probably...
Yes, Mr. Burris.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like so. So fifteens is to send it back. All right. Let's get into our new business at hand. Uh, we do have seventeen resolutions here, and I'm reading from two different agendas, so I'll go back to the one that has seventeen and not fifteen, so. Resolution oh, uh, two, twenty-five, oh, one, resolution authorizing renaming of private drive located in the Ford Civil District of Rome County off Loudoun Highway map, parcel, uh, zero, one, nine, to be vacant, gapped, waived. Motion by Brackett, a second by Cunningham. Uh, Brackett.
Commissioner Cunningham, my as far as I'm aware.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Cunningham, thank you for the...
Nothing further.
Commissioner Brackett.
Have we worked it out with nine-one-one and broad law?
And it says it in the resolution, it's body itself?
He's good with it.
Uh, in the future, though, whoever does these, is that you, William, that does these up? So I, I went driving down through, I think I know where it's at, is it right past elementary school on the right? So for now, if, if we could in the future, with these zoning resolutions and stuff, and just like the one with the previous, if you'd give me a physical address, and I could punch you into GPS and know where it's at, if that's possible?
Okay.
Uh, that's only, 'cause like I said, I think I know where it's at, is that new community right there next to elementary school?
Yeah.
All right. Any other discussion? Any debate? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. All right, motion carries fifteen. Resolution, uh, oh, two, twenty-five, oh, two, a resolution reflecting changes in revenue expenses and general fund one-on-one for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. Uh, motion by Wilson, second by Dove. Commissioner Wilson.
I believe this is one of the cleanups that, uh, went through the budget. We're gonna have quite a few of these, uh, so just be ready to see those.
All right.
Standard, nothing further.
Thank you. Commissioner Dove.
Nothing further.
All right, any discussion, any debate? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. Motion carries. All right, uh, resolution reflecting changes to revenue, I'm sorry, uh, changes to the drug task force fund, three fifty, I'm sorry, dang, I'm all over there. Revenue budget for animal control fund, one-twenty-one, for twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Uh, motion by Dove, second by Henderson. Commissioner Dove.
Uh, this was where we are receiving some lease payment from the nonprofit that does the spade, the...
Commissioner Henderson.
Nothing further.
All right, any discussion, any debate? Hearing none, Madam Clerk. All right, motion carries. All right, uh, resolution, uh, twenty, oh, two, twenty-five, zero, four, reflecting changes in drug task force fund, three fifty-seven budget for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Motion by Wilson, second by Dove. Commissioner Wilson.
Amending by twenty-six fifty is one of the lower budgets you'll see around. Nothing further.
Commissioner Dove.
Nothing further.
Any discussion, any debate? All right, motion carries. Resolution, uh, oh, two, twenty-five, oh, five, reflecting changes to the district attorney's general fund, three sixty-four budget for the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Motion by, uh, Dove, second by Hamilton. Commissioner Dove.
That was another cleanup.
Dr. Hamilton.
Nothing further.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. All right, motion carries. Uh, resolution amending general fund one-on-one reflecting changes in the expenditure estimates for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. Motion by, motion by Wilson, second by Dove. Commissioner Wilson.
Uh, this is payout for vacation, uh, for a couple employees. That's about, about it.
Commissioner Dove.
Nothing further.
Any discussion? Motion carries. A resolution authorizing, and this is oh, two, twenty-five, oh, seven, a resolution authorizing the county executive to submit a twenty, uh, twenty-five Appalachian Regional Commission grant program, uh, ARC, application to fund the Riley Creek Campground Improvement Project. Motion by Brackett, second by Dove. Commissioner Brackett.
Nothing.
Commissioner Dove.
Uh, this is a grant, uh, seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand grant, that, uh, we will get another grant to, um, have the matching funds, so we're gonna, one point five million for this project in grants.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk. Motion carries. Resolution authorizing the approval of funds from the capital projects fund, one-seventy-one CIA, Community Investment Fund, to fund a capital project in the city of Kingston. Motion by Wilson, second by Hamilton. Commissioner Wilson.
Nancy had the first one.
I'm sorry. Dr. Hamilton.
Nothing further.
I do need new glasses, by the way, guys, I've got a, a problem. Commissioner Wilson.
Uh, guy, I'd like to, uh, turn the floor over to Mayor Neil, if he would like to tell anything about that real quick. You don't have to, but if you'd like to.
It kind of, our attention that the new roof being put on Cherokee School affected two of the baseball fields for the KOC league coming up in the spring. And so they came to us, and our parks department, about redoing part of Porter Park in order so they could play ball games there. So that's what we decided to ask for this money for.
I think that's, uh, it's needed anyway, we've always, so I, I like to say that for that, too.
It's, it's, it's gonna be needed, it'd be, it'd be well-used to the summer.
Absolutely, yeah.
Chair, Chair recognizes Commissioner Burris.
So, so you'll just make that a part of your inventory of your ball fields and things in, in the future, right?
No, it's already a ball field.
I mean, I'm saying, though, with, with, with the newness and everything, you'll have another, another nice place to play.
Yes, I mean, it's already a ball field, it's just got another temporary fence and things like that, and it could be converted back to whatever.
So, do you see?
Yes, thank you.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. Motion carries. Uh, resolution twenty-five, or oh, two, twenty-five, oh, nine, resolution authorizing the approval of funds for the capital approval project, uh, to, uh, fund the capital project in the city of Rockwood. Motion by Commissioner Kirby, second by, uh, Commissioner Henderson. Commissioner Kirby.
I am not the first, but, but I don't mind bringing on.
But just, you have, uh, documentation in your packet, Ms. Ruby sent, uh, explanation, two thousand of this is gonna be used for a, a city's portion that we have to redo our master plan for our parks. Oh, she's...
She's here.
Oh, hey, wait, you're doing practice.
Excuse me, Miss Ruby, I didn't see you.
Oh, okay. Hey, you need to explain it. You need me to come up?
No, I'm...
Come on up, come on up, come on up.
I'm very shy. Anyway, thank you for this opportunity, but, uh, Rockwood's like a, a lot of small cities, we barely have a good budget when we start out, and then in the middle of the year, we find things that we need to fund. And so we set aside all the money for our pickleball courts, uh, turning our tennis courts into that, redoing the whole surface of all gateway courts. And then Rockwood Electric said, "If you're gonna do all that, you need no lots, because these won't work." So it's gonna be about fifty-seven thousand dollars, uh, we'd like to request thirteen thousand for that. And in the middle of the year, we agreed with Rome County to update our parking rec plan, and we got a wonderful price for it, just two thousand dollars each to do that, so we can apply for all these fabulous grants, and that would help us fund our portion of the rec plan. And we would be most appreciative. And we are not copcat in Kingston, even though Mayor Neil says we are.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. All right, motion carries fifteen. Uh, oh-two, twenty-five, ten, resolution to place in service the equipment as listed in the attached sheet, stated January twenty-three, twenty-five. Uh, motion by Henderson, the second by Gann, Commissioner Henderson?
Lady here is.
Commissioner Gann?
Ready with Junior, sir.
Commissioner Burke?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I think, I think on the list here, it says that it's a twenty-twenty-four Ford long truck bed, is that, is that yours, correct?
I can't, I can't, and I would add this.
Truck bed?
It's a truck bed.
So, truck beds too?
Yeah, they took the truck bed off, and put their, and the locks on the back.
You looking up there at that cone? All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk? All right, motion carries, resolution oh-two, twenty-five, eleven, a resolution approving the execution of a three-year mobile business agreement with AT&T for internet connections with a county convenience center. Motion by Burke, and second by Henderson, Commissioner Burke?
Yeah, I'm just, just concerned, it doesn't, is there, is there an initial cost of getting, because because some convenience centers probably don't have internet access available, close to them now.
Uh, man, we're close, we're, they're all supposed to have internet access soon, we're working-
No, they have to have it, um, I can run down and get it.
No, I'm just curious if we had, if we had, if we had-
I'm sorry, I'm trying to-
There was a cost involved with that. Because I'm not sure, does Ben have internet access, I don't know where he comes from.
He has some sort of internet access.
Because they look cameras, they can see camera, I mean, they can be able to see, but I just wish we knew how the cost was, that's all, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Commissioner Henderson, you had the second.
Uh, nothing further.
All right, Chair recognizes Commissioner Hooks.
Like, Mr. Chairman, is this farmer running for the camera system at each one of these centers?
It's for that and the new electronic timekeeping system that's being put in.
And you would let it come?
Elec- electronic timekeeping system.
Oh, okay.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk? Motion. Motion carries fourteen, one. Uh, resolution approving contract between Deckard Technologies Inc. and Rome County Ten Six to buy analytics and technology solutions for real estate for the Rome County Assessor of Property. Motion by Wilson, the second by Henderson, Commissioner Wilson?
This one, uh, I'm very excited about this, it's something I've wanted to see come to fruition for a while. The Deckard, the, uh, this, this company, in case you don't know, some, some of you were asking, uh, Molly had invited me up and had the lady speaking on it, and they basically find all the short-term rentals, quote-unquote, at the Airbnb's, and this is going to have a revenue change, we're gonna invest five thousand dollars, it's an a la carte company, and it's kinda weird, because we only need the basic, the five thousand dollars, to put this in, into effect. And, it's, what we have right now, fourteen Airbnbs that are recognized, that are paying correctly. We're gonna be finding, already, just in a quick synopsis of what she did, on the teleconference call, was a hundred and thirty-one. We believe there to be in excess of two hundred and fifty, which will be, for the county, wait, I think you had those numbers, but I think we're gonna be looking for, how much?
What I saw was about forty thousand dollars in additional revenue, but I'm not sure what timeframe that was.
That's just, that's for the basic.
Okay.
This could be up to two hundred thousand by the time it's done, that will bring into it, and I also wanted to add this very quickly. If someone asks you about this, if we have, this is our in-loo of hotels. We don't have a lot of hotels. We have some, uh, I guess what we have, about seven in the area, and we're getting some more in, into the place, but they pay their share of what it is, and you have Airbnbs, people, there are a lot of them are out of state, they're putting them here, and it's a free business, they don't pay anything. And they hide under the web, and they don't give you an address till after you make a payment. Then they tell you who they are. There are some, like, uh, Jim Henry and Associates, they're running it correctly, they are actually where you're upfront, out there, and they're doing it the way it should be, which I like. But this is really going to help Rome County, and I appreciate the efforts, uh, between Molly's best office, uh, the Code's office, and the rest of them in the committee that, that put this in there. I just want to give a quick explanation, I appreciate their efforts.
Chair? Commissioner Henderson, you had the second.
I ain't nothing further, I, I appreciate what you're doing.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Burke?
Yeah, when this, when you were the first, like, last year, when we had a company, and it was twenty thousand dollars. And before we could even, before we could even commit, they had, they had sort of gone kaput. But Molly's done a really big job, I think, she's talked to eight or ten counties around us, and the other benefit of it is, instead of, instead of assessing some of these, uh, Airbnb at the twenty-five percent, we can get them on this program, then we assess them at forty percent. So there's a lot of difference, just in the assessment values, uh, that are, that are, that are available with this, too, so we're really excited, uh, station's excited at tourism, because most of that, most of that money's going to tourism and schools, so it's, it's gonna be a nice increase.
Commissioner Kay had something to-
Sure.
The forty thousand, I don't remember what that was now, Commissioner Wilson, it was, uh, one of, another thing this helps do is, we had several Airbnbs that were actually in Rome County, but the tax revenue was going to Megs County. And I think after those, uh, Airbnbs in that area are accounted for, that is, alone is gonna provide forty thousand dollars back into Rome County in new revenue, that's been going to Rome County, or Megs County.
That was a zip code, uh-
Issue.
Issue.
But it was actually in Meg, in Rome County, so that, this, this program will help with that.
Plus the back money, we may get from where it's going to that place.
Hopefully, yeah. Thank you, Mr.-
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk? Thanks, sir. Motion carries fifteen. Resolution oh-two, twenty-five, thirteen, resolution authorizing the county executives to sign an agreement between the Rome County Emergency Medical Services and the Rome County Medical Center for non-emergency medical transport. Motion by... Motion by Henderson, the second by Gann, Commissioner Henderson?
Nothing further.
Commissioner Gann?
Nothing me, sir.
Any discussion? Hearing none? Motion carries. Uh, oh-two, twenty-five, fourteen, a resolution approving the inter, uh, departmental agreement between the Rome County Office of Emergency Services and the Rome County Sheriff's Department. Motion by... Parks, second by Henderson, Commissioner Parks?
Nothing further.
Commissioner Henderson?
Nothing further.
Any discussion? Chair recognizes Commissioner Goss?
I just need to let you know that I work for the Office of Emergency Services, so.
Thanks, sir. Any other discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk? Motion carries fifteen. All right, resolution oh-two, oh-two, twenty-five, fifteen, a resolution authorizing a continuous four-year reappraisal cycle, that's what we just briefed on this week. Motion by Commissioner Henderson, the second by Parks, Commissioner Henderson?
It's been explained.
Commissioner Parks?
Nothing further.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Dove?
Uh, I had a question on that, I, I thought that we were going to a three-year, and, and if somebody on the Budget Committee, uh, from last year explained their position that, to go to a three-year versus a four. Is that, uh... Is that correct? Uh, it had, it had been discussed, it's been discussed ever since Comptroller brought it up in May of twenty-three, I think it was. At the late, you were, oh, you, you were there, too? Yeah. So that's where it was introduced, so we've been talking about timeframes, Comptroller pushed hard, and then, uh... So we, so we've been working with Molly, I know last year, Budget Committee and Commission, uh, approved a position, a new position and a half for Molly's office in preparation for frequent reappraisals. It's very important for us to make sure that we are in line with Anderson County, and what they're doing as well. And we've been in touch with Oak Ridge City Council, who's also been engaged with us in that discussion. With that being said, uh, and I don't want to speak for, for Ms. Harde, but, uh, I think four years right now is where both counties settle together. If this is approved, which, by the way, is due to the Board of Equalization, or the State Board of Equalization by the twentieth, February twentieth, if this is approved, it can be amended a- as we go along in future years. But Molly has to turn this in by a week from Wednesday or Thursday, uh, just like Anderson County is, is due as well. This keeps Anderson County and Rome County in the same cycle for Oak Ridge, which is necessary. Um, and then we can look at more frequent reappraisal cycles than this in subsequent years. But due to current staffing levels in both counties, um, this gets us to where we're only subject to one, uh, ratio cycle, uh, which, which is one of the goals of more frequent reapraisals. So, ideally, I think we all would like to get as frequent as possible, but with all factors considered, uh, I support, uh, Molly's, uh, four-year plan here, along, as, as does Mayor Frank with her property assessor.
So Anderson County has already set it a little bit for four?
They voted last month for four.
Correct. Okay, nothing further.
All right, any other discussions? Uh, Chair recognizes Commissioner Burke, real quick, uh...
How many, how many appraisals can you do, can you offer to do a day?
A day?
Yeah, I mean, because you're, because what you have to do, you have to do so many, so many-
We have to do, on this four-year, we have to do twelve thousand, so if it, if it's our workload, twenty percent more. So it's regularly ten thousand reviewed a year, this will go up to twelve thousand reviewed a year, plus then we have to kill and go through that process, so our workload goes up twenty percent, and I, I have no doubt that my office can accomplish this with the staff that I have, that's why I requested this ahead of time, to get them trained and ready going through this reappraisal for the next more frequent reappraisal, we've been preparing for this.
So, if you did, uh... So you're basically doing about eight more a day, for, for four-year versus, versus five-year work?
Well, I haven't calculated that.
I said, you just did two forty, two forty a day, basically, day to day. So, at some point, at some point, we can still consider going to three.
At some point, we don't have the-
I think that's originally where everybody was going, if I didn't say it was going to-
No, no, I thought, it's, it's a mixture, some people are staying with their ad hoc-
No, I'm saying when we first started, when, when the Comptroller talked to us, and, 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 yeah, it was, it was three, I think, is what he was wanting everybody to get to.
His long as a half.
Okay, so the ratio, the ratio that we get, I mean, it all started because of the ratio, right, because we, we were leaving money. Do you know how much, how much that, that number is, I mean, if we have to increase employees, offset it?
No, that's something that I wasn't, I wasn't up there. Okay, with a four-year, like I said, it goes up twenty percent, and I felt, myself and, and Barry Coper and our appraisers had lots of discussion over this, as well as with Anderson County. With the staff that we have, this is a new movement across the state of Tennessee. I don't want to jump in anything, you know, and fail, so I want to gradually go into this, because it, it's one ratio in four, and to, and three, you only have one ratio, so we're dropping the ratio, so that eliminates that second ratio, that loss. And, with the staff that I have, we can accomplish this, and we want to ease into it, we've got some counties that are going, um, from five to three, some are going from four to three, but all of this depends on if the State Board approves it. So I still have to be approved, I just have to go through you all, get this signed, and then I submit this to the Comptroller's office, and then they then put it on the docket for the State Board of Equalization. So, this isn't a for-sure thing for sure, but according to Comptroller Mumpower, he will do his very best, um, to help us get this approved, because he does want to see this happen more often, but, so we don't lose more money. So we, either way, a three or a four is one ratio.
But it's actually up to you to just, to decide.
It's literally up to the Assessor's office, correct?
Good, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk? Motion carries fifteen. Oh-two, twenty-five, sixteen, resolution to donate a vehicle to the city of Harriman and the city of Rockwood. Uh, motion by Burke, and the second by Henderson, Commissioner Burke?
Yes, sir, we, we're very appreciative, and, um... We're back there is very appreciative of, uh, our vehicles, uh, the police chief was very excited to get this, he's put the, uh, he's put the detective that's been driving a very, very old car in this one, so we're very thankful, thank you for doing that for us, and Harriman, I'm sure is a, is a great one.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yeah, I thought Harriman again, they're, they're grateful, any help we can give them, so, that's all I have.
All right, any discussion, any debate, Madam Clerk? All right, motion carries. Resolution oh-two, twenty-five, seventeen, a resolution approving an agreement between the American Emergency Medical Services in Rome County, Tennessee for the mental health patient transport. Motion by... Motion by Parks, the second by Henderson, Commissioner Parks?
Nothing further.
Commissioner Henderson?
Nothing further.
All right, any discussion?
Yes.
Madam Clerk? Guys, before you pack up, let me, let me, uh, give me just a minute. Go ahead, Mr. Kirby. All right, motion carries fifteen. Hey, our March meeting is currently scheduled for the spring break time. Uh, in the past, we've tried to honor those, Mr. Chairman, children and stuff, going to take vacation. In the past, we've moved those a week, uh, out, uh, so, this time, we might entertain, we should, uh, we've got plenty of time to change it with the announcement and everything else. Is there anyone that opposes changing that commission?
What's that date, where are we extending it to?
I, Ron?
We're tenth to seventeenth, does that sound right, Ken?
Seventeenth.
Tenth to the seventeenth.
I made the motion, I'm just gonna- All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, lots of them. All right, and then, one final thing, uh, Madam Clerk, I apologize for the, uh, disorderly conduct up here tonight, so, appreciate, appreciate you, uh, letting me amend the agenda quite a bit, so, thank you, obviously. All right, motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second. All those in favor?